You put leading in this here register. What's your register, buddy? I just show them their register. Instead of making more of bread, you put black there. Ain't that what you have for risk?
No. That's wax.
Let's pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you again thanking you for all the many blessings of life, Lord. Once again, thank you for the rain. God, I just pray right now that you'll be with the families of the lives that were lost this past week in our county, Lord. I pray, God, that you'll be with each and every one who's had their lives impacted. God, just be with them. Lord, I pray that you'll be with this body of commissioners as they get ready to take on the business at hand. Bless them as you see fit. God, I pray for our nation and our country. And God, as always, I pray you'll be with little Landon. For it's in Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pray that the nations do declare the United States of America into the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do roll call, please?
Keith Barker.
Here.
Shane Bowman. Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carter.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Metch Davis.
Here.
Christie Harden.
Here.
Kelly Morgan.
Here.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trent.
Here. Okay, guys, I just need to make a little statement. I've had several phone calls last week or so. I don't, you know, we get a lot of phone calls. I don't know how proper, if it's right, if it's wrong, if anybody did it. But they are saying that some commissioner has given threats to the Boys and Girls Club that we might not give them money or take care of them anymore because of the location in that county. I hope, I don't think anybody really did it, but if you did or you said something to somebody, maybe you could go back and say, "That's not what I meant." I really...
Now, I had that conversation, so I don't care to say what conversation, because I am a part of the Boys and Girls Club and have been since 2015. So I said, "When things get, you get in the middle between political issues and the county, you run the risk of losing that support." And that's 100% true. And that's why we, as the Boys and Girls Club, is not associated with county local politics. We want to serve everyone and not get in the middle of things. Biosolites, county issue, Boys and Girls Club is not. So that's what I said. I didn't say we wasn't gonna keep funding, because I will always vote to support the club.
Okay.
100% is what I do. So that's what I said. So if it was twisted, this is the word out of my mouth, is that when you get in the middle, something like that, you run the risk. And I needed them to understand that you're, that's how it is.
And that's why I said that, because sometimes what we say gets twisted in several different ways.
Because I can't be the whole vote getter. There's 10 people here, and you have to have a majority vote to give the money.
Well, and I feel like the board made the decision they felt like they needed to make, and we need to say, "Okay, that's, you know, you made your decision, we'll go support you."
And that's where I tried to say that it's a separate entity. So that's where I was at.
All right. Commissioner Pipinger has wanted to ask us to move the announcements and statements to the beginning. So what you got?
It's just an interest of time, but we do have a couple people here. A miss, I'm gonna get the last name wrong, Cos is here. She was willing to speak on one of the events prior to coming up to her booth. And the way it's kind of set up, and I know we've got a lot of people here dealing with that one out. I was about to say, entertain it.
All right. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Well, might be good if they can make something, mic on up there and make somebody else talk about it.
Would you like to go ahead?
May I address my husband?
So we can hear you too, because you talk kind of low.
I'll make my statements brief. Before I begin, I have some handouts for the commission and the commission body. This is, what I'm handing out to everybody here is information about our association, which is the Tennessee Home Education Association. And also a copy of the homeschool TCA code that we operate under in Tennessee, which is 49-50, or 49-650. My name is Kelly Couse. My husband and I are the chapter presidents for Mid East Thea, which covers Pope County, McMinn, Monroe, and Meeks County. And so this is just a little information so that you can be acquainted with who we are. And also, there's, my card is on the front of this paperwork as well, in case you have any questions, you might asking anything about our association. We've been around since 1984. We are the homeschooling advocacy organization. We work with our state legislators and build relationships with the legislators. We monitor bills that are coming out of the education committees in both the House and the Senate. And it's all to protect the rights of homeschoolers to be able to educate their children at home, around their kitchen table as they see it. We pay very close attention to what's going on, also in the Department of Education with the rules and regulations. We have one of our chapter presidents, there's eight chapters across the state. One of our chapter presidents also sits on this council, which is the Non Public School Advisory Council. Those are seats that are appointed by the state. And it's a blessing to have a homeschool authority on that council, because then they are able to have a voice for us as well. Because anything that comes out of the Department of Education with the rules and regulations, that's a policy and that's not a legislative change. So I'm here tonight because the work that we do represents all homeschooling families across the state of Tennessee, whether those families are members of Thea or not. And about a week ago, I received an email in my inbox, along with countless other of my members in our chapter, along with our state president in Nashville. And we are all extremely concerned. I received several text messages, several emails, and phone calls asking, "What is going on? We have a problem." And the problem is, is that, and I do not mean to malign anybody who's here today, but there's just countless factual inaccuracies held within this email. And the email is containing information, and they want you to vote on a resolution. And I'm gonna very quickly just explain to you a few of these inaccuracies, so that, you know, this is up to y'all here in this county, whether you want to vote on a resolution for homeschool sanctuary or not. I'm not sure that it would do a lot of good for you, because quite frankly, you can't supersede what Tennessee state law is. And I'm going to ask or advise that it's not necessary for you to vote on this resolution. But essentially, there's claims that our Tennessee code, our TCA for homeschooling, has been legally reduced from three options to two. That is not correct. As you can see in the citation that I have put out for you, it is three options. It has been since 1985, when homeschooling became legal in Tennessee. It is still that way. That did not change last year, and there is no threat to that at all. At least, not now. Now, it is correct that last year, we were fighting House Bill 1214, Senate Bill 1194. It's the second year of our legislative session, so that wording could come back up. We might be fighting that bill again, but that's what we're watching. And there's, yes, it is true that there is a hybrid charter school option that the committee of Representative White, who carried it for Karen Sexton, wanted to put into our law. He wanted, they wanted to open up the homeschool law, which, like I said, currently has three options, homeschool in Tennessee, and make it a fourth option. And that was gonna put a publicly funded hybrid charter school into our TCA code right here. And that was gonna cause a lot of problems with mixing public school funding into homeschooling arena. It also was gonna cause problems with your LEAs across the state, because, yes, it is true, they were going to give the Charter School Commission the power to supersede what LEAs say yes or no. If they want to have charter schools come into their school districts, and also if they want to have something called a boarding school, which is separate from the hybrid charter schools, that would be year-round boarding schools. Those are the things that we were fighting back with this legislation this last year, and that we're watching for again this year. But that did not go through. So currently, we are still at three options homeschool, and those are safe and sound. We are not under attack. Okay? I just want to make that very clear. There is an issue that came out this summer, that it came to light, that our hours for category four church-related schools changed from six and a half, or four hours to six and a half hours. Technically, that change would have happened way back in at least 2010 or 2011. The reason why it was not known until just recently is because even though the Department of Education changed that, the rules and regulations were not updated until this year. And what they want to do is they want to make it to where the umbrella schools, which are private, like I said, the church-related schools, that is what most homeschoolers operate under. I'd say 90% of homeschoolers, not only just in Tennessee, but across the state or the whole country, choose umbrella schools for very good reasons. But the reason why it was changed from four hours to six and a half way back, at least a decade ago, is because they wanted to have the actual instructional hours match to public schools. That, along with many other issues or policy changes, were not updated in the system. They went through this summer, and they did that. Unfortunately, there was, there was not like a prior press release. And so when all this information came out, all the umbrella schools were getting hit with this news at the same time. Our HSLDA, which is Homeschool Legal Defense Association, our team of attorneys across the United States, and we have one assigned to Tennessee, they were asked, "Well, why didn't you know about this? Why aren't you on top of this?" We were asked the same question. And the reason why is because it's not a legislative change. It's a policy change. And in the Department of Education with the rules and regulation, they have tremendous latitude to write and rewrite policy as they desire. It does not have to go through the legislation, and in fact, it does not. So that is something, we're still looking at it, but at this point in time, we do not see that that's something that we're going to actively fight and argue. The reason why is because we acknowledge, we understand that homeschooling is life. And it's not just a four-hour issue a day. We can school 24/7, because everything can be education in the world. And most families recognize that. Most families recognize that schooling is not just for a step period of time. And it's not just your academic bookwork at the table. So we are not choosing right now to pursue this in a fight, because we also understand that when you start taking on some of these fights that maybe are not as necessary in regards to what we consider our freedoms or our rights, that that can actually have a lot of negative consequences and open up other doors you don't want to open. So those are some of the issues that have been brought up in here. And one last issue is, it talks about how independent homeschoolers have to test. In the TCA code, which is listed here, which I gave to you, it discusses testing for independent homeschoolers. Those are gonna be the ones who send a letter of intent to the school districts across the state of Tennessee, who choose not to enroll in umbrella school. And they send their grades, their attendance, their tests, they have their test scores held there, everything through their local superintender. The state law says that in grades five, seven, and nine, that they have to test through a professional testing service, and it has to be one that the LEA approves of, and it has to be done free of charge to that student. Right now, as it stands, it's whatever the public school students test. So if the public school students test with TCAPs, that's what these homeschoolers are testing at. That's, it's not a change, and it's not anything that's new. And the option, if you don't want to do that, is to do what, like I said, the very vast majority of homeschooling families across the country choose to do. And that is to enroll in an umbrella school, which makes it to where you are legally a private school student. And you're not under the supervision of your school district. You follow what their rules are. So I just, like I said, this is something that, I'm here because our chapter covers Pope County, along with three other counties. And we represent all homeschool students across Tennessee. And to receive an email such as this with so many inaccuracies, and then asking a government entity to vote on a resolution based on this is extremely concerning to us, because we hold the virtue and the value of accuracy, correct information, and integrity very high. We've worked too hard for 40 years now to make a good name for homeschoolers across the state. And we'd like to keep it that way. So like I said, I'm not here to malign anybody. And I'm happy to answer questions for anyone who wants to ask. But I just wanted to make sure that we set the record straight on any of your concerns. And that's all I have. Thank you.
May I start with question privilege, please?
Yes.
Is this assembly gathered to address House Bill 1214? Or we addressing tonight on the agenda the resolution, because this is two different things?
We're addressing the resolution.
May we please then disregard everything that was being said about the House bill, because our resolution does not mention it. If you allow me two minutes, I'll present it, I'll be brief, and I'll read it, so I will be brief. Madam Honorable Commissioners, thank you for recognizing here as tonight. My wife and I moved to this area 25 years ago. And after traveling for some time without doing some mission work, we purchased our first home in Raleigh, Tennessee. Both of our children were born and raised in Pope County. And the dream was to homeschool until they have the proper family values and faith morals before entering public school. Six years ago, we established the Pope County Tennessee Homeschool Network in effort to help other Pope County families in their homeschooling endeavor. Unfortunately, the limited schooling options under the pandemic of the state of Tennessee, which is historically known with homeschool liberty, began changing drastically. Online programs will introduce a public schooling at home, not the phrase, which is blows the line with actual homeschooling paradigm, that's historically recognized. Last year alone, two separate bills were written by multiple amendments, and an education voucher act effectively limited the three legal homeschooling options in Tennessee down to two. They did open indeed for several days for modifications that Tennessee called homeschooling. They did open indeed for several days, which was directly to homeschooling, the entire law on education in Tennessee, and began herding Tennessee students into one unified state-funded and state-owned. From any district as the state sees it fit. And we have communication with the president of the set organization from Nashville that confirms this. Having my possession of you, allow me to submit it in a minute. Now, please don't take this wrong, but state-sponsored voucher system, government-subsidized boarding schools, children at risk and parole programs under state care all resemble very closely my own public school experience on the socialism. When a similar bill was passed in the last few years ago, homeschoolers could not have their bibles in their homes, simply because their homes were now considered public schools. Speaking as a parent to parents tonight, when I say that this resolution draws the land in the sand. We're not running away from accountability, reporting will report more than anybody else. We simply want our children to have the God-given right to learn simple life values and personal morals at home, without the constant threat of new government regulations. Just like the Gun Sanctuary Resolution, Pope County reaffirmed our right to protect ourselves, our land, and our property, in close resemblance, this current resolution of homeschooling seeks to protect, above all, our children and the right to homeschool them. Which, unlike the Second Amendment, is not guaranteed as a fundamental first right either by the First Amendment or the Fourth Amendment. For this reason, we ask you tonight to vote in affirmation. During Pope County, Tennessee, we still hold this truth to be self-evident that all people are created equal before God, and this includes homeschoolers as well. Take full consideration. May God bless you.
Do you know anything else? Or do we have questions, comments?
Are we doing our normal statements, like us now? Or, okay. So I'll go ahead and get mine out of the way at the front, so I guess it's a good thing we did it. I just want to, I'm gonna apologize in advance on how I vote, because I've said this from day one, not everything gets in the pocket. And I know things happen last minute. It happens all the time. But when it comes to vote on something legal or money, I'm gonna pass, and I want you to understand why I'm passing. It's because I didn't have time to do research on my own. So I don't just get up here and vote because somebody tells me it's a good idea. So I'm just putting that out there, so when I pass on things, you know where I'm coming from.
And we can also table this to next time and give everybody time to look at it. Absolutely.
I mean, because I just think we're not giving any...
Because we do have new information.
I feel the same way. I mean, I don't know exactly everything that's going on.
Right. Right. So that's my thoughts, that's my opinion. Budget amendments and stuff like that, that's the norm.
Because I sure would not want to vote for or against the wrong thing here. I'm for homeschooling 150%. But I don't know...
You know, just some of this stuff we didn't have. I will say, you know, the whole thing, Greg, you did call and explain yours as to what it was.
Mine wasn't in the packet because of the weather, depending on some information from the state, and I would close because of the weather, so...
But you explained what it was. And so I needed to do something. But when it comes to the legal part of stuff or money, I need, I need to be able to do my own, so I know exactly how I'm...
So are we good with just tabling this and let everybody look at this new information we got?
It's just whatever everybody wants to do, because there's, there's half of our agenda items didn't have the type of this stuff. Like updates and stuff is fine, budget amendments is fine, that's pretty standard. Things change, and you can see, we're just moving money here to cover this expense or whatever. Those things are not a big issue. But some of this other stuff might be...
Yeah, I mean, some of it, you know, when it's added for our district, and we have no clue what it is, because there's no information. And I mean, it's really hard for us to sit here and decide what's going on with our people, because we can't even, we don't even get phone calls to tell us what it is, and we get no information in our pocket.
So I just wanted to let everybody know, that's why I pass, if I'm passing, that's all.
So would you, you want to table it till next, and that way everybody can kind of do some of their own research? Okay. All right. So we will table this one to the February meeting.
Like there's like five things on there that didn't have stuff. So I don't, you can handle each of them how you want to.
Okay. All right, there's that one. All right. Anything else?
Approval of minutes of previous meeting. Motion to approve.
Who can have any?
Any discussion? All right. Roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Metch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
All right. Approval of the report to the offices. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Metch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
All right. We have got a book of notaries. We have a Kali Bowman. We have a Victoria Holmes. Paula Burris. Jackie Russell. Madison Springer. Jennifer Weaver. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve or second?
Any discussion?
I thought, was there not another one?
Do we have another one?
I thought we had six. Was there one handed out tonight?
We had a whole pack. Yeah.
I think that was six.
Yes. I thought there was another.
Did you count six?
Yeah, that's six.
That's six.
All right. Any discussion? If not, roll call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Metch Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
All right. Now we're gonna move to budget amendments. Twenty-six and twenty-seven are in one-on-one general. Line number 39,000. For $2,000, it's going to 519-00331 for legal services, also for $2,000. We then have another 39,000 of $3,025 that is going to 58-190-309, and that's a developer contracts for $3,025 also. Also, we have the budget amendment from the sheriff for office LE supplies and other at a total of $7,500. And it is going, what, $7,500 on that? And then also, Alex 101 is maintenance or repair and tires at $2,000. So we've got $7,500 also on that. Is that all we've got there? Or three? I'm confused, should that not be?
Seventy-five, it's got $2,000, it's got total $7,500.
That's not...
Should be $5,000.
I know.
But that doesn't...
Oh, yeah, it comes up $8,000.
Yeah, it comes up a whole lot, you know, it doesn't come up...
Which cover something? No, that's right, 24.
This is 24.
Is that right here?
It's 75, I know, but then it plugged up as 2,000. Then it says total 75.
Right. It should be 8,000.
No, no.
It's 9,000.
It's got $5,500 for maintenance and repair, and $2,000 for tires, so that's 75, right?
No, this up here comes up to 75 at the top, don't it?
And the bottom comes up to 75. There's $5,500 for maintenance and repair, and then $2,000 for tires, so that's 75. It's just, she just don't got it lined up. They balance.
Yeah, they balance.
I want to see this right here.
Oh, I know, they're taking a little bit out of two different lines and adding it into one line. Yeah.
Yes. You can see that other, it's just not lined up. The amounts are, the amounts match. The mounts are, the mounts match.
Okay, I wouldn't have done it that way, but that's a cut.
Alright, do we have a motion to accept these?
Move to approve or?
Back it.
Uh, any discussion? If not, real call.
Keith Barker.
Yes.
Shane Don'ton. Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Crandall.
Alright, budget amendment for the Polk County School Board. Who has that? Is anybody here from the school?
They didn't turn any in.
They didn't turn any in, okay.
She's got that as a permanent placeholder because of some issues that come up in this last fiscal year.
Okay, alright. We've tabled the resolution for that till February. Alright, we have Mr. Michael Head here tonight about a land purchase. Can you give us some information? Do you care too?
Madam Chair. And I apologize, but this is an issue that had come up to IDB for another week.
Yes.
And it's supposed to come through IDB to us from what we had passed a while back. He's not supposed to come to us and then go back to IDB. It's my bad mistake.
But I thought, oh, when we pass that, they had to come to us.
It has to come to IDB and to us, IDB can apply. We're second down the pipeline. And IDB is, my understanding, already talked to him. Has IDB not made an offer back without a home?
I don't, I don't have any regulations. I've spoken to anybody. I've come to her just a little bit. I've not heard an answer of accepting anything, nor southeast or west.
Okay, IDB has heard this request a couple months.
I mean.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Head has not come to the IDB for any of the meetings I've had.
Then he didn't make the request, one with the board building a home there and one with that?
We've had a request through Buddy Haynes said that he had talked with somebody making an offer on the rest of the land in the industrial park, five thousand an acre. If he was allowed, if this person, and I don't know if it's Mr. Head, but if this person was allowed to build a home in the Dugtown Industrial Park for three thousand an acre without us.
Okay, so it didn't come from him, it come through?
No, and I apologize for the inconvenience, but I didn't really know who to go to. I've been trying to find some way I wanna build my shop. I'm a logger and a tree service guy. I wanna build a shop there. And I would be interested if I could, if I could build a home, I would build a home there and live there as well. But if I can't, I'm still interested through my business there. But if, that was the offer I made. But if I need to go through that board, I'd be more than happy to go through that board first if I need to.
Actually, I thought you already had. And I apologize for that. Cause I was hearing that this was discussed. Yeah, it was, it was discussed there, but I didn't know, I thought it was inefficient.
We can, you can talk to Ryan and get to where, okay.
We'll talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Next time something's put on the agenda, like for the third district, can you at least reach out to us and let us know what's going on instead of no, no being in there? Cause I mean, you know, it is our district and if someone has a question about it, we have no, we have nothing to tell people.
Absolutely. And I apologize for that because he talked with me, so that was my fault on that one, definitely. Alright, we have railroad authority presentation. We have Mr. Allen.
Well, our interest started the riding through the river gorge and some conversation that I had later with Mr. Andrews that we'll talk to later about the economic impact that having more rail excursions through the river gorge would have on copper hill. So that's our interest, you know, digging into it. It's my belief from reading the laws that as far as the IED board, if there's any future industry, that they would have to have a rail authority in place in order to get a spur if they require it. I'm gonna let Mr. Andrews talk now, he knows a lot for about it now.
My name's Tim Andrews, I'm with the Tennessee Valley Railroad Museum. And I think some of you might have been on the train ride when we did back in December. I think I've met a couple of you on that, on that trip. In addition to running a railroad museum, I'm involved with the Hamilton County Railroad Authority over in Hamilton County. The county established that railroad authority about twenty years ago in order to facilitate funding for industrial development such as where the BW plan has gone at the old Armee Am Edition plant. Rail was a major piece of attracting BW to that site. There are a number of grant funding programs within the state that require rail authority to be the vehicle for that funding to come to either a industrial development project. The county has actually built through the authorities several sightings for industries in Hamilton County. Maintains that ownership for carrying your time, so it's a publicly owned sighting. It also helps you pay where you are on a class one railroad like the CSX here in Polk County where they have to do certain work to install a switch or something. That can also go through rail authority where the rest of the money cannot go to a railroad corporation like CSX or Northern Southern or something like that. The state started establishing rail authorities back in nineteen eighties. A lot of small rural communities were losing their rail service due to deregulation of the railroads. And so these authorities became part of the state law. Originally, you had to go to legislature and get a specific rail authority set up through the legislature. And after about the third one of those, the state decided it was a better way. So they created a section, separate section within the TCA in what they call Title VII. It simply says, if you wanna have one, here's how you do it. And since then, there's now eighteen rail authorities across the state supporting about twenty-one shoreline railroads. Most of those are single railroads, single counties, although there are a couple of counties, a couple of rail authorities that have multiple counties involved in them. Here in Polk County, you've of course got the CSX main line that runs out of Ulula, Ewa, I'm sorry, down to the same line near Tanga. And then you've got the short line that's owned by the Tennessee Overhill Heritage Association which runs from just south of Ulua up to Copper Hill. Their air museum leased that line close to twenty years ago. TBA needed a transformer put into their Appalachia power dam, our power plant. And so they restored part of the line. And after that, Tennessee Overhill, which owns the line, encouraged the line to be rebuilt so it can be used for passenger service. Excursion services is not considered intercity rail or Amtrak or anything like that, it's strictly excursions. This past year, just finished, there was about eighteen thousand passengers who came and rode that train. About half of those went to Copper Hill and about half of those did the shorter, what we call the trip that just goes out. And does a half day trip as opposed to an all day trip. Railroad authorities are basically created by the county commission where the railroad operates. There's an entire section in the Tennessee code that explains, you know, how they operate. They have the authority to own a railroad, rebuild a railroad, facilities, they can acquire equipment. But it's really their choice, they don't have to do anything. But the state of Tennessee, TDOT, has a shoreline maintenance program that is only distributed out of diesel fuel taxes paid by the railroads to a rail authority to go to improvements or preservation of a rail line in that community. There's other grant funds, both federal and state, that also can go through rail authorities. But again, in some cases, rail authorities in Tennessee own the railroad, but that's kind of rare, out of the eighteen, I can think of only maybe two or three where the authority actually owns the railroad. In the other cases, they have to partner with the railroad, with the railroad operator, typically putting up any matching money or administrative funds that are required to be spent. TDOT then funds ninety percent of the cost of that rehabilitation. Within Tennessee, there's a set amount of money each year that's distributed between all the rail authorities based on need. In case of, with recent study that was done a couple of years ago, the line, all the lines across Tennessee were evaluated against certain standards that the class one railroads use and the Federal Railroad Administration uses to improve them. Not necessarily say they can't operate or aren't safe or whatever, but what does it take to move them to the next step? The line here in Polk County was identified as it could use about three point three million dollars. That's against an entire state need of almost three hundred million dollars. So typically, Polk County would get a percentage, about one percent of the annual funding. That funding has been about twenty million dollars. Again, tied to diesel fuel taxes and due to a lawsuit that the railroad brought, that's gonna come down to a much smaller number each year or so. But even still, it could be anywhere from seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars a year could be used to improve the old line and make it even better than it is already. Other funding program through TDEC, excuse me, PCD, if I'm keeping it in development, for sightings or other repairs during the industry that wants to look at, like, you know, right here on the CSX. That funding could also come to you. So that's kind of a quick overview. Obviously, you might have, if this is the first time, you've got lots of questions. I would expect to have answered all of them in my quick, you know, time. But I'd be happy to answer any questions or certainly come back or be individual, whatever works.
We had talked about rail. In a situation that you had really bad weather come into the county, you had weather damage to the railroad. Who would be responsible if we had a rail authority? Would the money come from the state, would it come from us?
It would depend on the circumstances. Typically, it'd not come from you. We'd never, if you all didn't wanna put money in railroad or the rail authority, you don't have to. You're simply a conduit for funding and they come from other places. In some circumstances, FEMA might step in and declare a disaster area in case there is federal and state money, but it doesn't direct you to do anything. Typically, the railroad operator provides, last time when that happened, how many years ago that was? The turn I O's. We got to go here. That was all paid for by the railroad operator. Every dime put the line back together by the railroad operator. And that can all be spelled out contractually between the rail authority and the operator. And also, in your commission resolution, can spell out the terms and conditions. For instance, there is a section about condemnation in the state law. The Hamilton County took that up and said, we won't accept that. The county commission has to go down any condemnation. So they basically took away that section of the rules. So the authority, or TDOT commission, can pretty well set the rules on what they want the authority to do or not.
Is there any other businesses wanting to put money in this to get this going now?
Not that I would, not that I would. We talked to a lot of people, but there's not a lot of industry in the line, primarily it's for passenger service.
Well, but I don't work one end, but everybody else does through Copper Hill. You know anything about Santa Grover Donali?
Who?
Santa Grover Donali.
No, I don't know anything about that.
Santa Grove has the train to haul bile solids. Well, they're suing the city of Chattanooga. They're in a lawsuit with Chattanooga.
I don't know anything about that.
I do have one more question, but this is another issue that had come up right after we voted last night. There was an accident on the way that involved a passenger vehicle. There was a lawsuit thereafter. And I know an attorney out of McMinn County showed up here with a copy of the rail authority that we had passed. Randy Rogers was his name. And he was downstairs, I was here. And explained to him that we didn't pass the rail authority a month prior, two months prior. And he, I sent it to the paper, y'all passed, no, no Randy, we didn't. I said McMinn, I think, did pending us passing the same resolution. And so he went to McMinn and then pulled out the case. But in a case where there's someone hurt by having a rail authority, what danger are you in on being sued in that lawsuit?
You wouldn't be, for, again, a couple of different reasons. Number one, going back to that, that was a great crossing accident that happened just past the street campground. Both the Overhill that owns the line and the Tennessee Overhill Museum carried millions of dollars in liability insurance. And so the lawsuit came hence and was basically handled by our liability insurance carrier.
But that's because we voted down the rail authority.
Yeah, but if you had a rail authority, you would not be a part of that. All you're doing is providing funding source and you have no ownership or liability, as I understand it.
According to that though, if that was the case, then they wouldn't even come to them whenever that was.
Yeah, Randy was here.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
You know Randy Rogers, well, he was, I think, passed a few months ago. Randy was very, he had a habit of suing counties at different times. You know, he was a good lawyer. He was, but he was very thorough. He couldn't get away from it. He just showed up showing up. But he had every intention of naming Polk County. Had we signed, he had every intention to get a copy of that rail authority.
Well, two things that I can tell you. Number one, this particular railroad doesn't ever go in McMinn County. So they wouldn't have been a party of a rail authority, couldn't have been anyway. Cause the rail line doesn't go there. It stops short of the county line there in Delano. So again, if McMinn County was looking and creating a rail authority to be involved in this, the line doesn't go there, so it really would be moot point for them.
That version had them as, they had some books on that rail authority, if I'm not bad in spitting at that time. And they were, they were boarding the train or something there in McMinn County at that time.
Well, if you go way back, that's when.
That's when this was happening.
Okay, I worked at the Athens stove works at one time and back then, they were running excursion.
When it first started.
That's right, they were able to board at the depot.
And then when it.
But that's, see, that's thirty some odd years ago.
And when it, when it quit, that's when they quit. They also never brought it to the attention that this whole train ride was in Polk County, Tennessee.
Sure.
And not McMinn County. There's people that rides up and down that line. And when they get off, they don't even know what county they're in.
Well, that's.
I know that for a fact, they don't even announce it. They don't tell it, they don't announce it, and that's been one of my pet peeves with this the whole time. I mean, and I'm not getting into my pet peeves, but, but.
Yeah, I will say that in the end, thirty years ago, and actually, one of the very first excursions the Tennessee Overhill ever operated, started in Chattanooga, came to Athens, came across to Etowah, went all the way down to Copper Hill, back to Chattanooga about eight hours late, well after midnight, they canceled the Sunday trip because there's no way they could turn the train around, that fact. So then the next move was to come out of Etowah. And the CSX doesn't even let you on their line unless you have about two hundred million dollars worth of liability insurance.
Right.
And I can tell you how much twenty-five million costs you.
Right.
Which is obnoxious to begin with, if you go to.
My husband was the track inspector for that line for twenty seven years, for the old line.
Okay.
And so anyway, and I'm proud it's been saved. Now, let me say that, I'm more than happy, I'm glad that that's been done.
I will say I'm not an attorney. I can't assault any attorneys that might be in the room. But in all honesty, they would probably give you a better idea about that issued liability. I don't believe there is any, I think, and that's well covered. And just like in Hamilton County, the railroad there, Enterprise South, which is owned by the city and county, is basically under an operating agreement that holds the city and county harmless through that contract and is defended by the railroad that operates. So if somebody did come in, attorneys technically come looking for a place where they think they can make a case. Okay, particularly on railroads because of something called the Federal Employment Liability Act as opposed to workers' compensation. That's an act that basically a railroad employee has to sue to get benefits if they get hurt. Okay, now, that doesn't count here because this is not a common carrier railroad. It only counts on CSX. So I'm just saying that attorneys by nature, if they think there's a fee to be earned or a percentage or something, will investigate what those options are. And once they get to some of that boilerplate that says that you're holding the city or the county or whoever harmless, if that could even be found, if there's a liable case. Let's just say state sends a hundred thousand dollars. Even the state contract has things that restrict the state's liability. Okay, so there's a series of contracts that are put in place all the way through this process that the rail authority would have to vote on and agree to before they can get an end to that contract. Throughout all these contracts are all sorts of language that the attorneys have put in to protect those people who don't wanna be involved in that liability. But again, if your county attorney would look at it, probably could give you a better answer than that, but I can't.
I guess I'm confused.
Okay.
I know a lot about a lot, but not railroad.
I try not to.
What are we, is this just a presentation?
This is really.
Are we expected to vote? What are we, what are? The reason I ask is because obviously I have, there's nothing in the package, so.
I was simply asking, come explained, because there were some questions, I think.
Yeah, my purpose was to put it in front of you for you to consider, optimize.
So we can start checking and designs and go with all.
So I would assume you'll give us something at some point, kind of some information that I get.
I'll help with that.
Don't worry about it, but I just wanted it in front of you so you could start considering it now.
Okay.
You know, it's, you've got some business owners in Copper Hill that joined us today and it's gonna be a huge impact economically.
So what's the huge impact if our lovely friend starts bringing in bile solids?
It's not ever been mentioned and it's a passion.
It's not been mentioned, but what if it happens?
But does the rail authority, does it have a.
The city owner owns it, so they can say who goes on it.
Exactly.
I mean, is there a chance of good commercial? Could you land a passenger rail?
Could you land a passenger rail?
I, yeah, I suppose you could, yeah. That's all, that's all, you know, in past years, we had, you know, all some of the iron ore outed there. Nothing has ever gone into Copper Hill, to the best of my knowledge, with the exception of two transformers for TBA, okay? So we had an effort to not truck all that iron ore back out the Ecoy River toward some of.
It's just unsettling.
Yeah, some of that was shipped by rail, avoid putting it all on the road there.
What's the difference between the Ecoy River and Hines River?
Brother protection.
So what if that train goes off into the river right there as it goes through the mountains? And that ore goes off into that water?
Then we have to be remedied.
Then our homage people's in trouble.
Well, I mean, they could, right now, that could happen, I guess, if somebody walked in and was offered to buy the material that's up there.
They're already buying. That's why we're unsettled.
And it's being trucked out.
Yeah, and it turned over, kind of, on the rivers.
And they had to clean it up under TDEC's responsibility.
You see why we're unsettled about it?
I can understand that. Now, as far as not what they call a common carrier railroad, which has to haul anything for anybody, that line was abandoned for regulatory purposes, and so they can decide what they want to carry and what they don't want to carry.
But the track itself will carry.
Yes, the railroad is capable of carrying.
It will carry, because I've already checked on that.
That's right. And so a lot of those things can be built into whatever kind of contracts, and that's a negotiation between the owners. You know, TBRM will operate whatever makes sense for everybody, and obviously, to keep the line up, if you want to keep it operating, does require generating revenue. You could say in some ways, it's a big liability, has to be a liability, hauling people, as there are, just like the accident they had or anything else, is there is handling any material at this point in time. But having a rail authority won't change that, one way or the other. If anything, it might provide money to make it even better, make it even safer.
Who determines what goes on the rail line? I understand that the staff will carry certain things, but it's the rail authority, correct?
No, rail authority doesn't really have anything to say about it. You're the owner of it.
The owner does, but not the county commission?
No.
Okay. That's a primary issue I have. And to answer the legality, yes, the county can do that.
I'm sorry, did you hear?
Yes, the county can do that, so can the town, so can the rail.
There's a little known law, I might, might not come to this, but what she's saying, there is a law where the county commission can regulate activity in the county if it poses a legitimate safety concern.
Sure.
I think that's what she was referring to. I don't know if it would apply to this or not.
But if you're talking about liability, you're talking about regulations.
Yeah, well, she was saying we could regulate, and there is instances where the commission can regulate stuff based on public safety. I don't know if it's following that or not, but that is a true statement.
I've got one more question. Go ahead.
I was just going to make this statement, that if we wanted to discuss it or something that maybe we kind of get with the county, with an attorney, the county attorney.
And we may need to do a workshop, bring him, bring them in and sit down and talk about it.
And just hash out any of the issues and questions and make sure we're all on the same.
Beginning to process, not.
Yeah.
I do know that the economics of it has been brought up. Has the IDB board voted on this or had it in on this herself?
We, we, I told them what I was doing.
But they've not made a decision?
No. He stood up in the end of the announcements and said he was coming about, because he said, "Nothing to discuss here." Exactly.
Just for informational purposes, right?
Yeah, that's all I'm doing here is providing, attempting to provide information at this point.
I represent the Overhill Board, and our only interest is passenger travel, and that comes under our umbrella of economical development and tourism. And that's the only thing, regardless of the rumors that you've heard, I've already heard them going around, and that, contrary to that, that all we're wanting to do is see the rail as owners, only be passenger train.
So I've got a question. So this rail authority, that's just to enable funding?
It has additional rights, but that's the understanding of what we're trying to set up here, yeah.
But according to TDOT, the only way you can get the funding from the grants is to have a rail authority established. They can't do it if they don't do it with the county commissions. They only go through the rail authority.
But that would just be to improve the rail.
Correct.
That's right.
Make sure the driver trying to prove.
So what it pretty much amounts to is it helps the owner of the rail to get funding to improve the rail.
Correct.
Yeah, that's.
And then you can add more trips versus what you've got now, just a couple of trips on the weekends.
We typically run weekends only. Part of it's driven by, I mean, you wouldn't go this month in January, because nobody would show up. It's kind of like the rafting season, we do have the season there, our fall colors and that's.
So that would go from dealing.
Well, you're pretty much, though, you're running a full scale, I mean.
Yeah, we start large.
If you had, the funding is not necessarily going to make you run more trips.
Not necessarily, no. What it does do is it does maybe improve the speed we can operate at in some cases, where we have to run five or 10 miles an hour.
Where you've got jointed rail, welded rail, straight rail, the blah, the blah, the blah, all the rates.
You've heard it all.
And all the rates.
My son's a track supervisor, so I.
Got you.
I think it opens up too for, you know, some of the things that we've talked about is drive, ride the rail up and spend the night, you know, in some of the Airbnbs up there. I understand that they may put some rooms in the old bank, don't know, but just, you know, that'd be a good addition to what it is today.
Hey, that would be different from state money?
No, that is, that's personal.
Just the fact that people are paying while we're doing. Yeah, it's a long, it's a long trip, both in miles and time.
It's a very, very expensive rail to keep up.
And the pandemic, so it didn't help out when you went from two thousand people a year.
It never ends with issues.
That's right. And it's aging.
And that rate, that, that line is unbelievable.
You said there's three point three million anticipated?
They identified three point three million, and that's to bring the track up to what's called the FRA class two, which it has to do with the number of cross ties per mile, it has to do with the surfacing, and it does set surface speed limits. And the second biggest piece of that is grid work. For those who've ridden the line, there are a lot of bridges on that line.
That's one of the biggest issues.
A lot of them are wooden trestles, and over time, they deteriorate, and, you know, have any assistance to keep that up. If anything, it's going to get that line eventually, just like, you know, the weather takes out a bridge, which actually did, it drew fall on a bridge, and that bridge had to be replaced before it could run again.
That's, that's one of the things that makes me worry. Three point three needed, did it line up to?
No, 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 that's to continue the line at, they did two things. One was to a higher classification.
Okay.
They have, the FRA has classification one, two, three, four, that all are related to speeds they can operate.
Fifteen mile an hour to fifty-five or sixty mile.
Yeah, and then the second part of it is they were trying to get railroad up to what they call two-hundred eighty-six thousand pound axle loadings, so that's the measure they use. A lot of the bridges up there, all the wooden trestles, are two-hundred and sixty-three thousand pounds. Doesn't mean they can't handle a passenger train, but that's how they set the funding, is using those criteria.
Well, like I said, the three point three, you know, if there's needs on that line and a rail authority's put in, and they don't address those needs, that's where I'm worried about liability coming back.
Now, the line is inspected twice a week to the FRA, under the administration's standards. If that line did not meet those standards, they wouldn't be operating. And the state comes on a regular basis, the FRA comes with their own inspection every year, specialized equipment over that line, what the condition of the track and everything that goes with it. Either party says that they shouldn't run, we wouldn't be running it.
Do you all, does, does your railroad company itself have its own private inspector that runs it?
Yes. We actually have four people who work here and do nothing but take care of that line.
And then the FRA comes in.
We spend probably somewhere near the three to five hundred thousand dollars a year on that line every year now, because it's just what it takes to keep the line open. And that can be from cutting trees, fixing that bridge if it hits by a falling tree. Falling trees are our biggest problem up there, honestly. But of course, the National Forest won't do anything about it, or camp, or whatever. But we've run into some trees that, you know, we've got to get over and get off, so it does happen.
Now, ticket sales, are you, are you the entity that does the ticket sales for this line?
Yeah, the railroad museum handles all the tickets.
In Chattanooga.
About four years ago.
It's all done on the computer someplace.
There was somebody come to us about four years ago for the, I know it's sort of off subject, been away, I think. The Overhill came to us. What was that over, it was about four years ago? So I made a presentation, and I asked a question that night, you know, obviously, everybody in Polk County has an issue, the whole trip, the excursions in Polk County, but when you buy a ticket, Hamilton County gets the sales tax, or they sell the ticket?
Yes, they do. We don't pay sales tax, because we're a nonprofit.
Well, they get some amusement tax or something like that. Well, that guy told us that night that they did, and they probably.
That may have been Joel over there. We, we own property on Highway four eleven, which we pay property tax on every year. We pay property tax on the locomotives that have been here, we pay that through GATX that we lease them from. We pay sales tax on anything we sell in Polk County, as far as, I started saying, McNacks, gift shop, food, anything like that. But admissions to nonprofits are not taxes, I don't pay Hamilton County a tax.
Well, the guy from Overhill, he's sitting there, we even agreed to go around.
There's a section of the PCA, we can go find it, that says that nonprofits do not charge sales tax on admissions. And that's, Tennessee Aquarium does not charge taxes on, on admissions.
Well, he just told us that night that he was going to try.
I don't think he do.
Let us start selling.
He was going to try to get it where we could sell them here in Polk County, and he acknowledged that.
You can, I mean, if we could have another outlet for selling tickets anywhere, we'd be happy to have it. We don't sell except in the fall, every seat on the train. We wish we did.
I think the issue between Polk County and Overhill goes back so, so far.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I get it. Yeah, could be. That's all I'll say.
I think our only concern is we don't want to end up like East Palestine in Ohio.
Sure.
We do not want chemicals shipped.
I don't, I don't either.
So that's where we're coming from. I am a hundred and ten percent behind the businesses getting more passengers. My concern is anything that's going on on the property that's on Copper Hill Industries and the shipment of anything that is other than individuals coming to and from Copper Hill, and solely giving a entity that responsibility and that onus concerns me a lot, because we've had a lot of problems with it. So I trust our county commissioners, I don't know about.
You know, I mean, from Adam's house.
Well, and it's, it's, it's not even that, it's, we vote for them, we have a rapport. With corporations, they don't necessarily care about our community, and that is our concern, particularly when we're talking about also sales tax and wanting to support these businesses. They start shipping any kind of anything other than people in and out of Copper Hill, it's going to be a problem for our businesses and for our community. So that is where we're coming from on that. We want Polk County to start getting the recognition and the money that it deserves and our businesses to grow and flourish, and that is the number one concern coming out of our community right now.
We have no interest in hazards, generally.
Would they put that in writing? If we adopted it, it'd be limited to?
People.
People only?
Uh, I think we could discuss that, yeah. I'm not going to say yes or no, because I'm not the board of either the Overhill or myself.
I think you said, you know, everything's negotiable, is that not what you said? And when it comes to stuff like that.
I think that'd be a good first.
Well, what if, there have, there have been rail cars stored up there, simply empty rail cars called empty, empty hopper cars, and it's a source of revenue that helps pay for the line. It has no hazardous material involved in it, it's an empty car. So I think before we simply say a blanket, I don't want hazmat, okay? I will say that, because of what's involved in handling hazmat, all those kinds of things. If somebody came to me and said, "I don't want you to all hand hazmat," I would say no. I would say, "I want you to store fifty empty boxcars, and I'll pay you X number of dollars a day, and a percentage of that goes to the Overhill's budget and other things, and so that money, they, all the Overhill, the other different county, whatever, we pay them a fee to use that line, and they use that to offset their cost of promoting this area." So I would, before we simply say people only, I think we need to.
Most certainly, there would be some negotiation agreement. I, I was making it very literal in that sense to kind of make the point, because of all things our communities have to deal with. But moving forward, obviously, there would be negotiations, and we, we want you guys to flourish, and we want to, we want business in our community, we just, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's going on that.
You're getting disagreement from me about hazmat and others flat outside.
I, that's, but we just have some, we don't want additional mining in our area, there's a lot that we're very cautious of, and not in particular part of our community.
We'll give the elements some information, simply can't get a workshop set up.
This guy right here, we got one more quick question.
Yeah.
My name's Bill Allen, and I'm a citizen of Polk County, an ex county commissioner a hundred percent, but I live by Copper Hill Industries. And for months and months now, Copper Hill Industries has been repairing the tracks that go from the main tracks into Copper Hill Industries. And my thought is, why would anybody spend all that money to repair those tracks? If you go by there and move that bridge, you'll see all those tracks are repaired, they've got stuff that funnel the water and all kinds of things. All the tracks, right from the tracks. So my concern is, I understand what you're saying, but my concern is that to make sure that, my thought is, why would that Copper Hill Industries spend all that money to repair the tracks from the main line into Copper Hill Industries if he didn't have something in his mind to use it? That's my main concern.
The question you'd have to ask him, and he's right at the bridge that you're talking about, you know, the state is about to replace that bridge, and so a lot of work is going on, it's to build a bypass or the highway bridge on Copper Hill.
That highway bridge, it's the little railroad bridge that goes to Copper Hill.
Yeah, that they have to move, they have to build a bridge beside the existing highway bridge, and TDOT is, is already working on that, so they can widen Highway sixty-eight and replace that bridge through there, and that may be what you're seeing, I haven't been.
I'm not ready to be in work on that.
No, I'm not.
These are instruments that only work on railroad track.
Um, the old equipment up there that works on railroad tracks is ours, it's all.
It's not, it's not there anymore, it comes and goes.
Well, that guy's right, they helped me clean the track up through our spring, the kudzu killing and everything, old company on the buddy, so-called buddy hand property.
I don't, I don't really remember that.
Okay, thank you, we're going to move on.
Let you down on that.
Sit down, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hatcher, Buildings and Grounds Committee.
I just put on our place holds with Buildings and Grounds Committee's methods the other day. If anything is going to do, I know we talked about.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you'll be, all right, so some of the things that we talked about in the Buildings and Grounds Committee was setting aside some money for the survey on what's known as the Bilal property. We'd also, and the one thing I didn't bring up at night, I talked to Daniel about it, that they even looked to do, if you wanted to move forward on that, to have a land impact study done, that was something that Derek and I had talked about before. I know you all got to have a meeting up there, which I missed out on. So I don't know if y'all still wanted to go that route. If you had some input as far as what was talked about with that issue.
We're looking with that being in track. And Keith, Dan, we'll look at Danny's track and agree. And that really, truly, that's perfect. That's a good point. Because I mean, it's accessible. Y'all think it's on suit. The water's on suit. But property, you're talking about the Bilal property? I mean, that would be great if you could get it access and it made it out of that. Probably, depending what kind of money you could get out of it.
Now, I do know today, Dan, Dan Howell contacted me. He was trying to get an email sent as he pulled in. He was literally pulling in his out. And as far as that goes, the access point, I know I've heard a lot of different things. It's my understanding that T-DOT will only put an access for the county.
If it's something county and beneficial to the residents of Polk County.
I will make sure that that's because I've heard, you know, stuff being said, well, we can, and it's not going to be a problem to get that curb cut for the county if we want to go that route. But if we're going to sell that property, I don't think T-DOT is going to go forward. So that was, that was one of the reasons why we talked in the survey, if we wanted to look at cutting off some of that, I think T-DOT's going to have to have something other in their hand that says.
That we're not going to sell it.
There you go. And this is going to stay with the county side. Yes.
We, I think, out of your place, for that, it's true. If you can, if you can get it developed, if you have a problem with somebody else coming in the case. So what, what you got something that we got access to, that's that particular.
And so like I said, we just talked about that. If y'all wanted to do that, we can boot some money around. If you want to skip over that, that was one of the things. So that we talked about bringing back up if you want to have another meeting, it's fine.
Brooke, what do you think?
I'm wondering if y'all, I'm a hundred hours late on this.
Well, go another month.
We need to be meeting in, only seeing.
That'd be good.
I'll get in. Are y'all just, when y'all get in, just call me when you want to get back to get whatever you have.
Okay.
We just.
You can't wait for us to make sure you get.
From your land.
I think it's going to come so much, it's, it's dropped off and there's a wet man also involved. I don't know what to do with it.
I wish we'd get it worked out, what would you say? Bill, the two other places, I don't know if it's possible.
Is there any, put it off along that road? Taylor, is that my Taylor?
Tablet on there, tablet on there.
That's the only access that I know according to that. That way it comes down, is that small?
That property, that property comes in, that part of the road, you know.
It meets under.
Meets under the hill, that came out me, this is high level, it was good. And it's like saying, you need to talk to the insurance company. So that's their, that's their property. They got a gate there, but they got, they got that table file on there and they got a, uh, water plug, a drinking plug. So you'll have to talk to them and see if they can move that gate. But you have both that here.
Well, I just know, like I said, there's been a whole lot of talk that T-DOT would grant a roadway easement and it's even said in the past, all this and that. That will not happen unless it is something that's beneficial to the residents of the county for that curb cut to be installed. And that's, but y'all, so we didn't.
We'd be benefits of the county if we're sold.
But what T-DOT is looking at is, is the traffic coming in and out of the way of the clover leaf and everything. But that was also, if you remember when we sit down there.
My, my, my actress didn't, didn't want.
Well, that's the reason I asked if there was a lease or not.
One of the other things, and I can grab eleven and get mine done, then we move into the room designation. Um, we went around, as we looked around that day, um, Cleveland State was set up in the little courtroom and I know that, um, there was a meeting with the Buildings and Grounds Committee that was nothing ever designated or set aside for the Veterans Affairs Office. And so I want to pull eleven up if I can and have designated as what is known as the library room and three oh seven. That is currently where we had to move Cleveland State to. It's these other two rooms down. It actually works a little better for them. Then it also goes up to number ten for our resolution. And I do apologize that not a lot of this was in your package, but this was something that kind of happened and when I had Cleveland State inside trying to get to their classrooms and trying to get stuff moved around. So all the surplus stuff is the junk that's piled in a lot of these rooms. Whenever the archives room was created here, it moved all of the materials that was from my office to these rooms. And I was not aware. And so that we had to move all of our stuff. So this would be to designate the Cleveland State rooms and then for the materials that are in the county executive's office to be stored into this other room so it can be properly locked up. The one other room that is here, the reason why we don't want that designated is because when the auditors come in, like they come in and stay in our office for how many months, Catrice, four or five out here?
Yeah.
They like to be able to.
More than that, to be honest.
Yes, they like to be able to come and then they come out over here. So I think a lot of confusion has come about because of some things. And so I'd just like to be able to set up those rooms as the rooms for Cleveland State. Cleveland State will be housed in this courthouse until they outgrill those rooms. What rooms? It's known as the library room and room three oh seven, if I'm not mistaken.
Library, which one's library?
Got library on the door. Another name.
There's not a number of those.
There's not a number on it.
Yeah, I know, I was asking which one of them, there's three rings behind.
Correct. So you have the auditors in the first one?
Yep.
And then the next two?
The last two then.
Correct, those next two that are, they're side by side.
On the left-hand side?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, yeah, but that's the only way I know the address because that's what's on the door. But for those to be set aside as rooms for Cleveland State.
You'd already, you'd already talked about that before. So you're just changing.
But I want it, I want to be sure because there was confusion because there was stuff done by the Buildings and Grounds Committee that didn't come before the actual commission. And so that's how come I'd like to have that done. So Cleveland State can set their computers up.
So they can be.
They can have their doors locked. They can help to get GD for the people in the county.
Right.
I agree with that. There's one other issue that Buildings and Grounds Committee talked to the Veterans Affairs Office.
And that comes back. Yeah, I'll come back to that one just a minute. If I can get my, my Cleveland State, that's number eleven. If I can move that one up, then we'll come back to definitions. Somebody will make that, I just.
Do you see the motion?
Do you see the motion?
I second it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Greg Rooks?
Yes.
Danny Carter?
Yes.
Abby Davis?
Yes.
Mosh Davis?
Yes.
Chrissy Harden?
Yes.
Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
John Peepinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trent?
Yes.
All right, now going back with what John Hoyt says. So with having the Veterans Affairs Office in the little courtroom, I'll need you all to designate that if you so choose to. So I can then move over because Tim's needing to get some lines and stuff moved. I can't move without being able to say when the auditors come in, how can you do this? So it's to keep everything proper for me. So there's that one if you also choose to do, and I know that's where John Hoyt's going to come.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to speak on this real briefly because I was kind of told I probably shouldn't. So I'm going to. I don't know about why. I support veterans. I have family members that are veterans. But, and, and I'm sorry, Jake, but the Buildings and Grounds Committee apparently gave permission to the Veterans Affairs Office, to the Chancery. That's fine, except that room is one of the biggest rooms in this courthouse for one person who's probably not going to have more than three additional people in it at any time. Now, I understand from Buildings and Grounds Committee that they talked about putting a wall there. Here's the problem, and really it's not, well, it is a problem. There's been three times last year when the Beer Board met and it come up here and either Republican Party, Democrat Party, or the Planning Board would be in this room, which we are required to publish on Beer Board, the location, room number of the beer permits. Fine, so we come up here, we ask anybody's here for the Beer Board and we can tell them if anybody comes in, we're going to be straight across the hall. The requirements are we have to have room for the public to be in those meetings. Planning Board, Beer Board, IDB Board, County Commission, and any of your committee meetings are required to have room for the public. We can't go into the Chancery courtroom anymore because it's locked up and they took the entire room. Like I said, that's one of the biggest rooms in this courthouse. So where do you want the Beer Board or any other additional boards to meet if there's something going on here? It's got to be a room big enough for, uh, them to meet. And it has to be within a reasonable time when they get here and see that they've moved to another location for them to make it in time for the meeting.
Can you not have like a calendar where you know that Beer Board is this day?
Beer Board is ad hoc. We only meet when we have, uh, applications.
Or maybe have some sort of who's going to be in here at that time, like you.
That's what I had.
Made on a different day.
That's what I had. And I had, so in my case, I had Cleveland State there for this. And then there's times where I have this, yeah, I have a list and it's all, we have them all year long.
But what, what John Hoyt's saying is though, he don't know when he's going to have a Beer Board meeting.
Correct, because that can.
So that can throw everything out of bounds.
Right, but you're not going to be like, today is the day I'm going to have a Beer Board, Beer Board meeting.
Well, we put it in the paper.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, we also had an issue too. What, what meeting did we have that we showed up and there was somebody in here? And we had to have them there?
Yeah.
But, but really the issue is that. The commission has to vote to put any office holder at any location, that's state law. Cannot be.
Nobody's arguing that. We're just trying to see is there a solution?
The question is the, the, uh, Building and Grounds Committee, I think, was told that there was going to be a division wall. That's a entire courtroom over there.
So where would we go for executive discussion if we were in a commission meeting?
Well, we'll have to.
You don't want that to ever happen.
Well, Executive Committee is, is, we can go with Rob's office.
That's why that county is doing.
Because it's part of the, have rooms.
But.
And, and like John says, you know, the wall, that's a, you know, we would just have to be, so like in our office, you know, to, to help to put up that wall to be able to show where our county funds go, we just have to have something that says.
Where everybody's going.
Where everybody's going. That's part of this with auditors. And so we're just trying to get everything cleared up because if, if that's, that's fine, but we just need to be.
Could your office be named for a Beer Board meeting?
It's not big enough to have the public.
If I'm there.
Oh, y'all got to act it by the public?
Brooke, Brooke, what have that meaning? Right here. We told, we told you to get with you.
That's what I was wondering. So is, is there?
Did we not say that?
But as far as actual commission.
Did he get with you about the roof?
No, and so we had Cleveland State booked. And you remember in that, in that, in a county commission meeting, I had said how the Cleveland State was going to have offices here at the courthouse as well as the community center. And on our calendar, that what we have that goes through, and we sat down with Cleveland State and asked them, you know, what days would work for you? And Cleveland State took the proper routes, contacted Lois, and I can, I mean, I can say in Catrice, she would care to go get it, but it's listed through the year right now in the twenty twenty-four calendar. And, but by moving Cleveland State, it's not going to affect them. They can just move down. But it's, it's also to get everything so, like you were saying about the wall up, well, then whenever we have to have that done and things done of that nature, I still have to have this commission's voter approval of where you all put somebody so it come in and have them done that way.
So.
So it went through the committee, it went through the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
It was good.
Discuss.
It's good.
But it has never been formally brought before the commission to give that authority. And so now, before I can do some of the things that need to be done, I've got to have that authority voted on by you all.
Half that courtroom would be plenty given after a Beer Board meeting. Or a Planning Board meeting in most cases. If there was a division wall put in there, uh, when you walk in the door, everything to the right-hand side BVA office, there is a secondary door at the end that would come into the left-hand section. I mean, as far as a single office.
What's the maximum?
Is, is there a reason why, like, I don't know what's available and what's not because I'm never here during the day. So is there any reason why you couldn't go in the old, in the mailroom and us find somewhere for the mail? Different, is that room still open?
If who, what, we're in the mailroom?
The VA, I mean, if, if that's, if, if that's an issue.
So.
I don't know.
That courtroom over there, is it big enough for that?
He, he's got home health, uh, or, uh, health.
So, yes.
Online health is.
We'll wait at the room next to the mailroom because it used to, they just.
No, it's, uh, veterans' health.
So in the mailroom, in mailrooms where you kind of have the refrigerator, the microwave, that's where we do try to have meals and things whenever we all come together. Right behind it would be the restroom and then the room behind it's kind of a storage area right now from where everything is.
Where everything just ends up.
That's what's, when I came in, it was known as Jake's office. And then, you know, and so.
If that's an option, that might leave that, this open if we just have to have a second place to, as a backup to me, if that's doable for you and us find somewhere else for, for Jake's office.
Well, the only reason the move already happened is because, which I was getting quotes to get a wall built. Uh, quotes coming in very slow, people, or quotes were outrageous and I wasn't going to bring them, bring them to Robbie when eight thousand dollars killed a builder painting wall. Two weeks ago, pipe bust in my office flooded car, car and salad. And I, I couldn't sit in there anymore. So that's, that's why I went ahead and made the move up here.
A division wall shouldn't cost that much. I mean, it probably would be, what, uh, twenty-six foot wide, maybe?
I think it was about twenty-four, twenty-six, ten, I didn't go all the way to ceiling with it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
Goes top ceiling.
I mean, that, that shouldn't be.
Does it actually have to go all the way to the ceiling?
You have, he has to have, you have social security numbers on your files.
Yes.
Yeah, it has to be considered a.
Can you see over a wall that's ten foot tall without going twelve or fourteen?
It's having health, uh, issues. What's the health program you got coming in?
Telehealth.
Telehealth, therefore.
You got to keep it private.
It's got to be somewhat private. But now, most of these would be in the heat, like, uh, Planning Board speaks with Beer Board.
Right.
They'd be in the heat and so there wouldn't be anybody in there more than likely or telling. But you could go up.
Because I mean, the reason I said that was I remember seeing in some old courthouses that I've been in, they've done a petition wall, but it wouldn't be all the way to the ceiling. And I think they partly done that to, to make the flow of the heat and the air also slow.
Because they don't have the drop ceiling over there like, like this one does.
Yeah, it's hot. And so, I mean, that's why I was asked, but if that would be a possibility, not going all the way.
And like, like John Hoyt said, I mean, most meetings are going to happen in even time, uh, just this solid wall, no door or anything on it.
Yeah, but I mean, but, but privacy wise.
I was on the impression because he was on the whole.
I mean, I, I'm still moving stuff up here and whatnot, but, uh, yeah, I mean, our original petition I gave to the Building Committee was pretty much happening. So that way the far end could still be used for meetings.
So.
Is there another office, Woody, that you, is there another office open that you could use and fit your needs?
Not without a lot of clearing stuff out. Like Robbie was saying, there been, there been so much stuff, probably twenty, thirty years of stuff just.
I mean, we can do that. To make it easy. Would you be willing to look at another office, building the wall in this big courtroom?
I can't, I just, I just need some privacy. What's that, the VA's won't start this telehealth here for veterans who can't get out, make it Chattanooga, Athens, or even out in middle Tennessee at a point?
What I'm gathering is some want to save this bigger room for being petitioned up and make it as.
I'm okay with it just being big enough for the, for them to have the board meetings you need.
I think that's a good compliment, is get that wall built.
Now, Randy Gates had a secondary room downstairs on, on four two. It's past the trustee's office on the right.
Yeah, I think his, didn't his auditors normally use that room?
They did, and it was a fairly good sized room. Is it, got anybody signed to it there?
It would just say, let me.
Exactly. My knowledge, don't think it's in there, is, is, the sister's stuff is in that office.
I'd say their auditors still use it, but state probably still use it.
I'm not for sure what else they have, but there is that one.
So I guess, do we? I'm just trying to figure out what we want to accomplish. So, are we wanting to vote on that tonight? Figure out where to put Tim?
He's made it, I, I believe.
So I've gotta have something. For Tim to be able to get what he wants done. I've got to have something from you all as the county commissioners, does he make those rooms? So that way, we can move ahead and get forward, if he's wanting his lines moved, if he's wanting those things done.
So do we need to do vote on the process if he needs to get bids and go from there, because he thought those bids were too high, right?
Well, depending on thing under the bid limit, according to the, there's no even-
Right, but everything he said was over the bid limit, right?
Yeah, I, I, the only one I got that was under the bid limit, he came, I all did, gave you a price, but never got back with an actual quote.
So I say, start that, that way, we can't, if it's under the bid limit, then let's do it and get it done and-
But still, I gotta have-
You need to have it in the minutes.
I've gotta have-
Are you making a motion? I will make a motion.
Second, third.
Did you get all that?
What was the motion?
The motion is, if it's under the bid limit, right?
No, I still need your-
There's his office to go there. There you go, there's the motion.
And then that way, yes, just, that we get through with other, I just gotta have something to take a start.
I make a motion that move the VA's office into the old Chancery courtroom, as you walk in the door.
There's already a motion.
All right, motion, I'm glad.
She just made that motion.
Everything to the right-hand side of the front door.
Okay, throw it in.
Oh my gosh.
Right-hand side of the sun.
Something door, when you walk in the front door, everything to the right-hand side of the VA's office.
All right, put me down with discussion.
Yes. Let her get that real down first. Yes.
Tim, would that be enough room? Everything to the right-hand side on that?
All right, when you're done with your notes, you can do roll call. So we're just making the motion that Tim gets to the right-hand side of the door, that's, that's all. That's his, that's his designated spot, okay. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Martha Cranton.
So, my surplus pro-
They have stuff in the packet, Robbie.
Well, like I said, that was all on the meeting.
It was, I'm just kidding.
So now, what was in the packet is your surplus materials, so-
This number.
Ten.
Yes.
So, whereas a listing of property has fulfilled its intent, usage, longevity and service to the county of Polk, has continued usage and become suspect of the expected outcome, with such properties being included as the following on the page. Six sheets, six and a half sheets of insulation, wooden rack, one wooden podium, two five drawer filing cabinets, two metal shelves, sixteen chairs, one two drawer filing cabinet, one sensory safe, one C S three oh, four oh copier, one small black desk, bunch of broken benches, and all the garbage. So therefore, now be resolved, this Polk County Commission meeting in regular session, just on this, the twenty-fifth day of January twenty twenty-four pursuant to the TCA code five dash one four dash one oh eight, one and two, and any other law of the state of Tennessee that the county executive is hereby authorized to sell, disperse as, in part or in a whole, the following properties, which are deemed to be unusable and/or surplus by the Polk County Commission, with such being made at any legal sale or discharge qualified under the chapter five of the Tennessee Code annotated, or for any other applicable law or allowance of the state of Tennessee for dispersment and surplus damages or unusable property. And this resolution shall take effect as it's passage in the public welfare requirement.
Is that more, more approved?
One, one, yes, I'm ready.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Can I make a motion?
Much.
Much. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Martha Cranton.
Yes.
Number twelve, the reason why you don't have anything as far as bids, cause no bids came in.
Good point.
That's the second time that I have put out the air monitoring system, unless you all as a commission want me to do that one more time.
What's that company that Bradley Gown uses?
I spoke, I don't know that I've spoken exactly to them, but I have spoken to four different companies. And the issue is, is you have the companies that produce the air monitors, and then you have those that install and/or monitor. Even though they produce their monitors and they can produce them, there's nobody around in the area that wants to come out and look to do the installation, maintenance and service that will follow.
Who's doing Bradley Kennedy's?
I'm not a hundred percent, I'm not, I don't-
They still do it, I thought they just did it for about a little bit of time.
And I, I don't, I don't know Bradley Kennedy's.
This makes me kinda wonder, just give or take a little bit, if, if, is, are people afraid to, uh, you know, maybe be liable, so to speak, for the information that these monitors are supposed to provide about it being accurate? Or can they be dragged into a lawsuit?
They're going to be in a lawsuit.
If they say it's this and it ain't, you know what I'm saying? Does anybody see that, kind of, uh, what's, I mean, cause what's going on? There's nobody interested in it.
Though, though that, I mean, if it went towards that, that'd get a premium competitive, I'm sure. So it's something they would probably wanna do, before you just find somebody shows.
Well, there's something that's going on. I don't know what it is, it's either they're not, uh, they're, they're, something's going on for, for no interest to be.
But like I said, the, the companies that build these-
Can you send me, like, an email with all those people in it? Cause I mean, I would like to talk to all of those companies.
Those that I can find, because it's been some, we don't have caller ID in the board. And so there'll be a lot of them that we'll call, and then it'll be a, you know, Robbie, I'm sorry, at this point in time, my company, and I don't have anybody that's willing to do the installation and the monitoring, but it can be made, but they don't do the installation and they don't do the monitoring. But yes, I'll go back and look at those emails and send them to you. But like I said, when you put something out for bid, you're asking them to come to you, you know, you can't really get out and solicit.
Okay.
But y'all wanting to go out one more time or no? It costs a little over a hundred and some odd dollars to run them every time, and that's been twice this year. And the reason why I backed it up, the county commission meeting, was to give it another ten days, just so it'd be out a little longer, so it would not be in your package.
Third district, what do y'all wanna do?
Have you got a question?
Have you got a question over the business?
What are you trying to monitor exactly?
The odor monitor.
Odor monitor.
Oh, oh, oh.
What about the gas?
This, this monitor's supposed to monitor and tell us exactly what's coming from us.
It's air monitor.
What the smell is.
This was on Friday before Christmas. I was trying to figure out where the smoke was coming from, I thought something was burning. That's off the side of sixty-four, right below St. Wolf's Garage. It smoked all right, I watched it bump, three tractor trailer loads on the side of the road down there, right about table. Anybody else wanna see this?
Yeah. I could fix it myself, I wish I had something to trip to it with. That's a semi, very straight up, I watched it more, now that's smoking on that thing. That's not steam, that's gas.
We need to go, guys. Rebating or not rebating?
Thirteen.
No, no, not pre-bidding. All right, number thirteen. Resolution for surplus property- For, um, the sheriff. Uh, resolution to discharge surplus property, whereas the following listed properties have fulfilled its intended usage and longed eminence service to the county of Polk, state of Tennessee, continued uses had it become suspect as to the expected outcome with such property, following as a twenty-eleven Chevrolet Silverado with a hundred ninety-five thousand miles on it, and a two thousand nine Dodge Charger with a hundred forty-seven thousand miles on it, two thousand twelve Ford F-150 XLT at two hundred forty thousand miles. Now therefore be it resolved that by the Polk County Commission meeting in a regular session, this twenty-fifth day of January twenty twenty-four pursuant to TCA five dash fourteen dash one oh eight, one and two, and any other law of the state of Tennessee preceding property or properties which are hereby deemed to be unusable and/or surplus by the Polk County Commission, with such being made at any legal sale qualified under the chapter five of the Tennessee Code annotated, or any other applicable laws of the state of Tennessee. This resolution shall take effect on passage to public welfare requirement.
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Martha Cranton.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Brooks, your name designated.
Uh, this is for Oakway area. It's just go show your new, take a little over young to learn something. I've lived in Polk County all my life. And I learned you, Oakway was incorporated at one time, and I had a mayor, and it was, uh, well, Susan Anne's here, she might wanna tell us a little bit. It was her, uh, great-grandfather.
Yeah, it's my great-grandfather, and he lived, um, just north of where Hardee's is at, on four eleven. And he donated that land to, uh, the state to fill the void. And so that was supposedly the first part of Highway four eleven that was constructed between Atlanta and Knoxville.
And he owned all the land around it, yeah.
And, but he had it incorporated and became the mayor, so that he could get the funding and get it, get it on.
Yeah, he was first part of four eleven, probably anywhere, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and he ran for Congress and did a lot of other stuff. And then his son was my grandfather, and he was justice of the police and, uh, led the American Recovery Act under FDR for the, during the depression.
So there's that.
Yeah, I gave him one.
Who's this, who's in the picture with FDR, you handed him?
That is my dad's brother, it would have been the mayor's grandson.
Pretty interesting stuff, to look at, those pictures.
That was it, Rose.
Rose Litt.
Yeah.
That's pretty interesting news.
Yeah, they helped make sure, like, Polk County was covered here and given funding for funding.
Well, I appreciate it, I thought of yours, and then I kinda, I'm surprised I'd get your great-grandpa and the grandpa all that mixed up, I probably might save it on, that may put in a spot.
Oh, no, okay, and my dad is still alive, and he's, um, eighty-nine, he'll be ninety this summer, so I was hoping he could do it.
This is a resolution.
There's a proclamation order.
Proclamation.
I'm sorry, got it mixed up. If one, well, be one dash one, since it's proclamation.
Yep.
Twenty-four. Whereas the Polk County legislative body acknowledges that the Wimberly family is a longtime originating family in Polk County, going back five generations. Whereas legislative body is aware that Wayne Hot Dog Wimberly is eighty-nine years old, and is a well-known community member of Polk County, and that his father, Mark Wimberly, served as justice of peace for Polk County and was appointed as director of the American Recovery Act for Polk County after the Great Depression. And whereas the county commission is also aware that Wayne's grandfather, Major Ringo Wimberly, owned the property north of the Highway sixty-four bridge, and in nineteen twenty-five, he helped organize Oakway to become an incorporated city, which he became the only mayor serving from nineteen twenty-five to nineteen twenty-nine during its incorporation. During that time, he gave the land for Highway four eleven to the state and brought in the surveyors and contractors to be, be the first piece of paved road between Atlanta and Knoxville. He also ran for Congress in nineteen twenty-eight. Now therefore be it claimed by the Polk County Commission meeting in irregular se- The reason says irregular, it's supposed to meet last week, we're cutting off a week, so. Irregular session this twenty-fifth day of January twenty twenty-four, at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee, that the Polk County Legislative Body hereby decrees that the area of Highway four eleven beginning at the entering Oakway sign on the south side of Highway sixty-four, wettingus Memorial Bridge, and ending at York Road on the north side, be named Wimberly Cross. This proclamation shall be spread across the minutes of Polk County Commission, and a copy of this proclamation being placed at the Polk County Historical Society.
Motion Joe Burden?
Second.
We got a motion, make second. Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Chrissy Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Martha Cranton.
Yes.
Greg, have you talked about getting signed?
Uh, we're gonna contact Dan House about getting signed for us.
Okay, cool, all right.
Jack, you can, or the name can-
All right, appointment of the agriculture extension committee members.
Signed copy, we'll send it on to Dan House.
Yeah, don't, he can't say what he did now.
Uh, we had several committee members on the, uh, agriculture extension committee that their terms expired first year. And, uh, should be in your package there, we had, uh, Candace Bates, Johnny Dunn, Sam Hood, Sheena Hare, and Debbie Davis that expired. Um, Candace Bates, Johnny Dunn, some terms they had deserved, uh, six and second years, that's my all. Yeah, I can take those off the committee, and, um, and we've got some replacements for them. So our recommendation now would be that Mr. Hood, Mrs. Hare, Ms. Davis be appointed, or reappointed, to another two-year term, and then we would appoint Rebecca Ward of Oakway and L. W. Smith of Copper Hill to serve on the, the agriculture extension committee for two years.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis. Accuse.
Accuse.
Accuse yourself, yeah, accuse yourself. Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippenjer.
Yes.
Martha Cranton.
Yes.
Well, we done those. But I would, I would like to bring one thing up just real quick, because, uh, county executive Hatcher's asked me a question over and over.
No.
Two years.
Three.
I was wondering if he'd ask me that question tonight.
Why, we're gonna have an announcement statement soon.
Uh-huh. What was he, you wanna go, Rob?
We're gonna have a fair.
Actually, we're gonna have a fair this year.
Thank you, Joe, bye.
The, uh, Polk County Fair Association did, is, is Ms. Brunnen here tonight? Okay, Polk County Fair Association did sign for August twenty twenty-four. It has been put in Mr. Paxton on use of the show barn, and Ms. Burris on use of the pool. So we will run the county fair this year. And that's right, by the Polk County Fair Association, they've done the signature on the, in my fact, I got a picture of the contract where they signed.
Two quick things, I, I first of all, like to say a big thank you to Ross Tarver and Tarver Distributing, and CG Roxanne and Crystal Geiser Water. Um, when Ross contacted me the other day, I want to be sure everybody understands, that was done by CG Roxanne and Ross Tarver. When Ross Tarver contacted me, he was trying to find somewhere to get a fifty-three foot trailer of the water in. Those two were the ones that made it happen. They sent their own people up, uh, I was about an hour late to the party. But by six fifteen that night, every bit of the water that was in those trucks and trailer, there was a lot of people came, there were, there were trucks taking pallets of water out of the back of the trucks, but there were so many people. And I remember last, or looking at Ross at one point in time, when a person pulled up and said, my water's frozen with my will, I don't live in Copper Hill, but can I still get water? And Ross's expression was, shoot ya, man, I just wanna get you some water. And I'd really like to be on record, it's taken how much, I appreciate Tarver Distributing and CG Roxanne for their acts of kindness. Um, also, keep your thoughts and prayers with the Copper Basin Fire Department, the devastating loss of two lives that very same morning. I know one of these firemen personally. And I've only known of him, according to his wife, to only have cried three times that she's ever seen him cry. And it was after that devastating fire that two souls were lost in our county. Also dealing with the fire department truck week. Um, this was, just came up, and I didn't put it out on Facebook, but I'll tell you all that there was a Department of Commerce, that's insurance and fire prevention grants that were applied for by your fire departments. Copper Basin Fire Rescue will receive forty thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Cre, um, West Polk Fire Rescue will be receiving thirty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, if it's okay with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, I don't think it's a care, but I'm fixing to apply for a, a grant for our courthouse, to see about getting some windows and other things done. It's a sixty forty match, not quite as good as some of the rest, but a little bit be better, but.
We tried that a long time ago.
Yep.
So, I hope you did.
Yeah, I do, I do too, but I'm, I'm really dreading, because I know the Buildings and Grounds Committee a couple years ago walked around and looked, talked about maybe trying to shrink the windows and things. They're calling the architectural structure, and they want the engineers, design of the courthouse to stay safe. They will have to stay safe, but if that don't work out for that, we're also gonna do a multi-layered, uh, like, sewer pipes that, that are scalded, that cannot take paper down, they overflow, uh, water lines, those buses are in here. We know on Mondays when we come in, we got good rusty water, nothing wrong with the drinking water. But you don't record that, it's the old pipes that are inside the courthouse. So we are gonna try to go after those next to southeast Tennessee Development District. I hate it that they did go up a little bit on our dues, but we'll use them every chance we can.
I wanna add something real quick, just, um, get a little update to, um, I've had several phone calls since the course of when I came on. Um, so I'm working, I reached out to Ryan and the city, so we're gonna work on something together, um, with the red light out here, about having a turn in signal. So if you've ever tried to turn that in the mornings going to school, or when the school gets out.
It's awful.
It's an issue and a hassle. Um, so they've been great, and their G kids have been great, um, to get that ball rolling. Um, but I did want, cause I've had a lot of calls, that was before I, before I took office, that's what they were calling, so. Um, we'll give an update when we know more.
All right, Greg.
Oh, I just gonna say, as soon as I am, I know we're rough-looking buses, but would you like to get your picture made with us for the Historical Society at the meeting? They thought that'd be a good item, you think that's bouncing, that is a good idea.
Smile pretty much. Smile pretty.
Oh, why don't you smile pretty? Oh, yes.
All right, anyone else?
Oh, and we do have two garbage trucks running this week. It's a real good thing, so for the last ten days to a week, yeah, we've only had one truck running the entire route of the county, so. I'm excited to finally have a second one back.
All right, good night.
One time, one time, one time, real, real quick too. I know I'm a little late on this, cause we've had a bunch of cold weather, uh, but we may have some more. And if any of y'all know of anybody that is in need, and not people that's just wanting to bum, that needs straw for their dogs, baby goats, anything like that, have them to contact me, and I will make it happen.
And if you throw your husband's out, she can make that happen too.
I got them.